和平给你她弟弟是个大亨她的弟弟永远不会去教堂开始做她弟弟的 identification prayer 当我听到这个 testimony 的时候第一个想到的就是我的妈妈
带人去我家传福音
我用各种方法都试图把她带到上帝上帝请救她波阿斯
波阿斯
波阿斯好的
Reverend Mark Daniel 的一个奖章
当我在中国的时候我阅读了一个由 Reverend Mark Daniel 写的小小的报告关于站在和继位这些经文真的增强了我的信仰
所以我说我要为我妈妈做认同性祷告
我真的祈祷我的母亲用 identification prayer 我和我的妻子一起做 prayer altar 我们开始与她的罪作斗争并且把它向上帝祈祷当我们开始与过去的罪作斗争我们的无知 你知道吗？有一个 revelation
至亲
哦对于 relatives 继位通过 relatives
后来我就想到我妈妈是潮州人
在她们来之前她们两次祷告
她们也是很认真要要来为跟我妈妈传福音
不是我的家而是医院
因为趁她还没有
所以这是
然后我记得我跟我妈妈传福音的时候传到然后她们去就她讲什么我就哦哦哦
她说 yes 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 你知道吗？ 你知道吗？我的母亲只是回应她 所以做水浸
哈利路亚
哈利路亚祝上帝
洗完礼之后因为我妈妈有痴呆症
当她达到九十年 你知道吗？ 和
哦她们很厉害她们给她吃
然后让我母亲吃然后问我是否很好我的母亲说非常好继续问你是否相信耶稣耶稣饶恕你的罪 yes yes yes
所以说哇那包果条很厉害
那碗面条很有效告诉她叫我这真的证明了她真的相信耶稣来相信耶稣真是太好了 那是一她的100岁生日 来相信耶稣真是太好了
哇感谢主我们把荣耀归给神
哈利路亚我们把荣耀归给上帝 amen 哈利路亚我们还有一个从我们的教会从英格兰的神职人员的姐妹苏珊她喜欢来给我们做 testimony
上帝真是太好了对不对我在三月里学到了 prayer altar pastor 你刚才讲了这一点那天一夜之间发生我想我的天我做太多 boot camp 或者任何运动了所以我去了医生他们把我送到医院我知道是 grade 3 癌症 breast cancer 那是在三月我当时完全震惊了我该怎么办所以我回家我就想我要建一个 prayer altar 我必须建一个 prayer altar 怎么办 pastor 说什么我记不得了我当时震惊了 你知道吗？像在建造所有的 cd prayer cards 所有东西还有什么什么我的 prayer cards 在哪里我在心里听到孩子你在做什么我说上帝让我找到我的 prayer cards 让我找到我的 prayer cards 请给我一分钟然后上帝说请来见我我们被血洗了对吧你知道他为了我们的不公而受伤对吧我真的理解了这个交换是什么他谈论了他的经历血条是什么意思这个 crucifixion 是什么因为这个变成了我的 prayer altar 我只是坐在那里和他聊天我会被撕裂我需要进行 chemotherapy 我需要做这个我需要做这个这个那个对吧我说上帝你说什么他只是说不你不是我说但是医生告诉我这个那个他说不我要切除肿瘤我的天我说我们该怎么办对就是听我的整个夜晚我甚至整个夜晚我起来我永远不会这么做我只是在夜晚起来我能听到他他说你不会失望我想可能是 Romans 10:11 谁相信我不会失望我想可能是 Isaiah 49:23 同样的事情对吧谁相信我不会失望我就想是的这就是它我不需要化疗我不需要切除这个东西会消失对吧甚至在夜晚我跳舞跳舞我在想我的天这很奇怪但是没关系我只是唱它早上两点我的丈夫不是 believers 这是房子的另一边他刚刚走进房间因为我正在学习你在跳舞吗我说是的我在他说好吧我就留在那里然后我感觉这个东西开始消失了按照医生的分析当我检查的时候是 1.5 cm 对吧她们说这在消失我说我知道他说不我说什么他说我们要进行 surgery 我说什么什么他说不你相信我我会在 surgeon 上工作好吗你的 surgeon 我说好吧 whatever 就听你的所以我进行了 surgery 因为她告诉我耶稣对她做了施救当我下床通过我我不知道我说什么但是无论如何我醒来从 surgery 上我身上只有一个小伤没有什么一个在这里和一个在我的胳膊下面它没有扩散它没有到处蔓延它就是 nothing 我说我爱你耶稣我爱你那么多上帝我爱你我爱你我靠近他我们就是 communion 那是我们每天和他 communion 他和我说他会现在要处理你的家庭我说好的因为他们不是 believers 然后我的妈妈在骗我她说我该怎么办你得停止祈祷那个天使她说好的你得祈祷耶稣耶稣是你上帝对吧她就是说祝上帝赞上帝哈利路亚耶稣基督我说是的太棒了妈妈你每天给我打电话好吗然后我的姐妹打过来她说你想让我做什么 我说你写91诗 继续读它所以就是这种东西发生了然后我们进行了手术他们取出了肿瘤医生看了看我她说我不懂我说我懂我懂它消失了她说是的它是在化疗 0.5mm 下去化疗的范围所以你不需要化疗我说祝福活神我知道我已经被治愈了我们那个时候是圣诞节已经完成了他做的事情已经完成了但是她说你得通过 radiation 所以我再次向上帝问我说上帝我该怎么办他说是的你去做它因为我要做什么他给了我一个 verse 我想是 Daniel 如果我没错 3:23 当他们三个走进篝火他们没有闻到任何篝火或者什么那一直让我继续所以我通过这个 radiation 我说上帝我们通过这个 radiation 为了什么这是什么他说我把你手放在那里没有对你发生任何事情你已经完成了你结束了你被治愈了但现在我在处理 oncology 部门我说好的我们该怎么办对吧好的 whatever 这很棒但是 whatever 一位护士来找我她说你是基督徒对吧我说是的我说你是吗她说不我是穆斯林我说嗯好的然后她说把你的 cd 放进去我想玩它们我说好的我的基督徒 cd 对吧她说是的我说好的所以我走了我在祈祷上帝哪一个是 Don Moyn 和所有 Don Moyn 的东西我说好的我的父好的所以我把它放进去我说哇这很棒所以我们一起唱歌然后 oncologist 开始就像天堂一样在 oncology 部门对他们都在看她我说是的这很棒然后你知道一些病人进来他们在一起唱歌 cd 他们说我们可以把这些 cd 留着如果没问题我说是的你可以拿着你继续祈祷你继续玩这些 cd 简直是太棒了简直是太棒了我感谢活神然后之后我说好的我想是时候去工作了我被治愈了上帝他说不你不会去工作我说我们要做什么我得挣钱对吧他说我会提供我说 Richard 不是那么有钱他非常紧绷钱包他说没关系我会提供我说你想让我做什么他说我会把你日记填满每一天三或四个人你只是你只是会见证对吧我没有做什么人们还在打电话给我昨天我有两个人我只是去喝咖啡钱就在桌子上 Richard 不问我任何事情他只是把钱放在桌子上它就在那里我只是想好的然后我出去和人们见证对吧这很棒这就是我的生活现在所以我不会工作我只是出去和人们见证每一天祝福活神这是一个很好的生活我感谢活神还有一个事情我还没说完保险公司应该支付所有这一切他们要付他们拒绝支付他们不会支付因为我八年前发生了什么事这和这个没有关系但他们不支付我说上帝他们不支付他说是的但你的辩护人是谁我说你是我说是的我说好的我们该怎么办他说你站在指控上你只是说我会给你所吃的野兽的食物我说每一天都会这样然后我到那个 NTUC 对吧我只和他们说话我说上帝会恢复这个上帝会恢复这个我想我是一个完全的糊涂蛋我不在乎因为上帝会把我那钱还给我以耶稣的名字 amen
哈利路亚哈利路亚祝上帝哈利路亚哇上帝太棒了是的我还有一个最后一个我们邀请李丽珍她来自 Saturday celebrations service 哈利路亚
哇这太神奇了自从我们开始 prayer altar 事情发生在我的家里上周五我的丈夫 Jonathan 我自己和 pastor Song 和他的妻子我们决定去 Hongling Park 为 LGBT 事件祈祷 pink dogs 所以我们聚在一起然后我们走之前我们觉得我们需要在 prayer altar 做祈祷他对于这些人们的心意是什么所以我们聚集在我们的 prayer room 我们的 prayer room 在19层我们开始祈祷上帝我们等待上帝我们问上帝你的心里有什么我们应该做什么我们应该祈祷这些人们我们开始忏悔我们的罪与 LGBT 的罪作斗争我们忏悔然后 pastor Song 真正的忏悔我们对他们低头我们只是短暂的忏悔 pastor Song 真正的为这些人们所以之后我们继续去 Hongling Park 当我们到达那里我们四处走走然后我们开始祈祷大概一次或两次你喝了那神圣的 communion 酒然后你四处走走之后你去中心然后你抹十字当我们做这件事的时候中途我们遇到了另一个我们的 Sunday bilingual 然后我们抹十字我说好的那很好我们聚在一起所以我们撒酒在田地我们祈祷好的我们分成四个群我们东南西北然后之后我们聚集在中心我们祈祷我们抹十字他的存在然后我们会在那里进行神圣的 communion 所以这是我们做的每个群人去东南西北在田地中心我们听到一声巨大的尖叫非常大的尖叫好像有什么断了我们当时震惊我们感觉在我们的心灵中发生了什么精神上我们知道黑暗的力量被破坏了所以我们信仰上帝然后我们进行我们的神圣 communion 一棵树掉下来了实际上一棵很大的树掉下来了当我们去看一棵树的时候它真的是一个很大的树一个很大的树也许我们可以展示一下树的照片哦是的是这个吗可以看到吗是的它是一个很大的树我们的心灵中上帝说我听到了我回应你的祈祷好的在早上上帝的话来到了我的丈夫 Jonathan 然后上帝说这是树这是我向你展示的信号我听到了我回应你的祈祷你承认了自己的罪他们聚集的地方它可能在那天掉下来你会知道发生了什么很多人会受伤人们会被杀死因为它是一个很大的树那个时候会有很大的人群然后上帝说有时候我的人们不明白他们会认为哦好上帝的审判来了但是上帝给了一个强硬的话语他说我是上帝我渴望慈悲而不是审判我给你这个信号这是对你来说的我正在阻止我的审判所以我们给上帝所有的荣耀
Amen Amen 我以耶稣的名字欢迎你我很荣幸能和神的仆人在一起他们响应了他的召唤在如此重要的时刻服务他我认为这是一个荣誉任何时候我们有机会在神的仆人面前我知道你付出了我遵循了我的使命和帮助他实现他的目的我也感谢你比你的自己的教会更大它必须比我们更大我们需要基督的身体如果我们想要看到这个黎明在这个时代和时间真正的推进上帝的王国真正的发展所以我感激这是上帝寻找的心他谦虚他意识到我们需要的大事比我的礼物更大我的召唤更大我们站在当我看这些全球的 movement 在崛起的时候你意识到我一直在说基督徒们什么时候会团结你看到所有这些 movement 阵结我意思是 atheists 在美国团结变得这么 aggressive 推动他们的计划和他们推动的人类主义 And I'm saying, what more has to happen for the church to say, we must come together? I mean Muslims are uniting to take the continent of Africa? I mean, they are coming together saying, we want to take this continent. And you, you realize, when is the church going to say, we can't just be in this for our own ministry? We truly need to come together for the purposes of God. Now, I want to accomplish two things this morning. One thing is, I want to share briefly with you about a key ingredient to seeing a move in God in your land. And then I want to open up for questions because truly, as you're beginning to receive teachings from, you know, reading this and hearing that and all these things, it begins to lead you down and you, you have these questions, well, how do we do this? Or what do we face with that? Or what do we do with these things? And what I'd like to do is give an opportunity for us to interact. Because if all I do is talk and it's a one-way conversation, then I can't meet you where you are. You understand? And the best way I can be helpful is if I can understand where you are. And then, so I'll even need somebody to give me a piece of paper because I'll jot down some of your questions and then answer them. So if somebody can help me get some paper, that'll be great. Let's look in our Bibles, we're gonna look at two verses and we're gonna look in Luke chapter 10, verse 1. And then we're gonna look in Isaiah 62. Luke 10, verse 1. Are you there with me? You know, you don't hear pages turning anymore, you see, you see screens lighting up. So you, in the olden days, you would know when they found the verse because you stopped hearing the noise of the pages, but now you don't know. In Luke chapter 10, Jesus said, "And after this, the Lord appointed seventy-two others and sent them on ahead of him, two by two in every town and place where he himself was about to go." Now, listen to this, this is a strategy of the kingdom of God. Jesus sent out forerunners to prepare the way for his coming. One of the keys to seeing a move of God is that there begins to be arising of forerunners, people that will go prepare the way for his coming. These are the people that pay a price. John the Baptist was a forerunner for the Messiah to come. There's a price you pay as forerunners. Pay. Because you are preparing and preparing a way for the coming of the Lord. So there is things you have to engage in, there's things you have to do. And my hope is that in this room are some of the forerunners for Singapore. And I'm gonna go into that a little bit more and, but there is never going to be a move of God without forerunners. There's never going to be. In all the times God would move, he'd send a prophet in, he'd send some people in to go and prepare the way before he came. Amen. Let's look at Isaiah 62. I'm gonna read this whole chapter because this is a, a chapter talking about the land of Zion and talking about that it was in a bad state, but that God is giving a promise, it's not gonna stay in that kind of state. And then he talks about that there being people that are crying out and not giving him rest until the land is begin to be turned around. And then it talks about forerunners coming in and preparing the way for the coming of the Lord. So if you'll read along with me or just hear with me as I read Isaiah 62. "For Zion's sake I will not keep silent; for Jerusalem's sake I will not be quiet, until the righteousness goes forth as brightness and her salvation as a burning torch. The nations shall see your righteousness, and all the kings your glory; and you shall be called by a new name. And the mouth of the Lord will give, that the mouth of the Lord will give you. You shall be the crown of beauty in the hand of the Lord, and a royal diadem is on the hand of your God. You shall no longer be termed forsaken; your land shall no more be termed desolate; but you shall be called, 'My delight is in her, and your land married; for the Lord delights in you, and your land shall be married; for as young men marries a young woman, so shall your sons marry you.'" He's talking about the land. "Your sons will marry you, they'll commit themselves to you. And the bridegroom rejoices over the bride, so shall your God rejoice over you. On your walls, O Jerusalem, I will set watchmen, all the day and all the night; they shall never be silent. You who put your, put the Lord in remembrance, take no rest and give him no rest until he establishes Jerusalem and makes it a praise in the earth. The Lord has sworn by his right hand and his mighty arm, I will not again, I will not again give you grain to be food for your enemies, or foreigners shall drink your wine for which you have labored. But those who gardened it shall eat it in the praise of the Lord, and those who gathered it shall drink it in the courts of my sanctuary." Now, listen to this part, go through, go through the gates, prepare the way for the people, build up, build up the highways, clear it of stones, lift up a signal over the peoples. "Behold, the Lord has proclaimed to the end of the earth. Say to the daughter of Zion, behold, your salvation comes; behold, his reward is with him and his recompense before him; and they shall be called the holy people, the redeemed of the Lord; and you shall be called sought out, a city not forsaken." Amen. This is about land that was, it said that it was forsaken, it was desolate, people referred to it in negative ways. But he said, I'm going to do something in that land, I'm going to cause your young people to commit themselves to this land, to begin to lay down their lives for this land, I'm gonna raise up watchmen that will cry out to me day and night to see my mighty arms stretched out over this land. And then in verse 10, he's saying, now forerunners, go through the gates, go through the gates, prepare the way for the people. If we want to see a move of God, there has to be forerunners that prepare the way for the move of God. They begin to remove the barriers, they begin to get the breakthroughs, they begin to gain the ground that we're talking about. They're not waiting on God just to drop down a lightning bolt and do it himself, they realize there has to be forerunners, there has to be people say, God, I'm here, use me, God, use me, do what you need to do through me, let me open the gate to the marketplace or let me open the gate into the church. Many times, I'm telling you, one person in a family can begin to see the breakthrough, one person, as they say, God, whatever it takes, I want to see your presence come into this house. Even their whole, like we'd heard about relatives, even seeing the, the, the other generations, the parents, the aunts, the uncles being saved because they're saying, God, we want to see that happen in our home. Everywhere I have gone, if there are no forerunners, there is no move of God. Whenever forerunners, those are people that begin to rise up and saying, Lord, I am going to seek you, I am going to pursue you, I am going to build an altar, no matter what it takes, and I'm not gonna just say prayers, I want to build an altar until your presence comes down and we see tangible fruit, evidence of your moving in this way. Because that's when you're removing barriers, that's when you're beginning to deal with your own sinful nature, your own self-life, and you're beginning to crucify that, lay it down and saying, God, whatever it takes to see that kind of breakthrough. This isn't light things, it says, go through, go through, build up, build up the highway, that there's a path that people can go. I was one time in Korea and I was sharing and there was this man from Malaysia that said, God had told him to go to Korea and he had gone and I was there talking with the people and he had been a part of building prayer altars in Malaysia. And when, he gave a testimony, it was about a 20-minute testimony. And when that man was testifying, I said, that man has built a real tangible prayer altar. There has been a lot of work God has done in his heart at that altar, there's been a lot of transforming of his own life, there have been stones removed, there's been wisdom given, there's been insights gained, there is a depth that has come to him. And when he shares for these people, that they can tell there's tangible evidence that God is doing this. And that man, as he shared, the atmosphere in the place changed. I mean, God led that man to come to Seoul. He didn't even know why, then he gets there because he had been a part of what's going on in Malaysia, he had been helping to build prayer altars in Malaysia. And so he had felt God told him to go to Seoul and he told what God is doing in his marriage, what God is doing in his family, what God is doing in his own heart, and then the ministry God was opening up to take him into in parts of Malaysia. And as he shared that, you could tell, he was opening a gate that people could see tangible. It's not just a nice story, it is spiritually, God had been doing a work, that he had now a key, that he could open a gate. Amen. One of the things you'll notice in the Bible, that whenever there's a move of God, there's always three types of people. There are pioneer or forerunners, there are standard bearers and there are beneficiaries. Those forerunners, those are the ones that pay the price, not everybody is a forerunner. In fact, we look around and say, where are the other people? Not all of them are called by God to be forerunners. Some of us have been called, God has put the burden on our heart, God has awakened you to the need of the times in which we live. God has awakened you and put a burden on your heart to saying, enough is enough, something must change in here. God has called, not everybody's been called to be a forerunner, we should not look and speak against anybody, we should begin to realize, the Lord, this is in your hands, you've called me and what I'm called to do, I must do, I cannot deny you, Christ. What we're called to do, we will do. Many times, remember when it says in scripture that God took the ordinary people? He took the ordinary people to confound the wisdom of the world. We don't need the big names, we just need the forerunners. We need forerunners that'll begin to say, God, what will it take for you to begin to really come and move in Singapore? Normal, it's not human endeavor. There, those, you must have forerunners, those are the ones that begin to learn, what will it really take to see the move of God? Those are the ones that'll begin to get instructions and begin to pay the price. Those are the ones that'll begin to do the labor to see what kind of breakthrough is needed in the Singapore Christian. To really get past the time barriers, the selves, the worldliness, all the various things that hinder them from really seeking God and really begin to seek the Lord. What is it going to take to see? That's what it means by removing stones and making a highway, that you really begin to press in because building an altar is not just reading 10 chapters of the Bible, saying prayers and then saying, hallelujah. It is really beginning to draw and as God, you draw into him, he begins to show you his heart and you begin to say, God, what's it gonna take if I'm a pastor to see my church do this? It is not instantaneous, it's not preach five sermons and do a study group and they pick it up. There's barriers that have to be broken through, there's mindsets that need to be changed and only the Lord can unlock those doors. But I'm telling you, is if one church truly begins to unlock those doors and you begin to see the, the tipping point in the church where they're beginning to do that, there begins to be a gate that has been opened. You begin to see that, that that church really begins to build family altars and you realize that that begins to be an open gate for other churches around to be drawn. The marketplace, I, I mean, the, one of the most miraculous things I saw in Taiwan was building the prayer altars in the marketplace. Because it was changing the way they did life, society. And we were seeing it because the presence of God, as they have experienced it personally in their families, then they weren't seeing the same weight of God's presence as they prayed in their marketplace. And they started asking God, why, what's wrong? And God started showing them unethical things, compromises in the way they did business, ways they were trusting in themselves instead of God. Even medical doctors, even surgeons and psychiatrists and all these people were building prayer altars, I told you, even TV script writers and TV producers were talking about this, they were talking about how God, they were seeking God to change even the very product they were making. Those people are forerunners. The other area is standard bearers, forerunners will go and pay a price, but as you start going, people will begin to come up and hold up the banners. You'll begin to see people that'll begin to come along behind the forerunners, that'll begin to help carry the weights and carry the banners and begin to make the way so that others can come in. It's like they begin to hold up the standard as others come. And then the majority of the people are beneficiaries. What did the, you had Moses and Aaron and Joshua and Miriam and they were forerunners and standard bearers, you had the lead, the priesthood and all of these people going and most of the other people were beneficiaries. What were the beneficiaries doing as Moses and the purpose of God? They were complaining, right? They were griping, they were saying, why are we doing this? This is too much. In every move of God, beneficiaries will speak against the forerunners. They always do, it's like, you, what are you doing? Oh, that's too much prayer. Oh, we don't need to read the Bible that much. Oh, what are you talking about? No, don't worry about that. But you can't neglect or forget the beneficiaries because as the move of God comes, they're the ones that are gonna pay for the things that need to be happened, they're the ones that are gonna help support the move that God's gonna bring as the harvest comes in. There were so many people that spoke against things that then as the move comes, they start coming in and saying, amen, amen, this is so great. Look at what God is doing, they'll even stand up on the stage and say, hallelujah. It doesn't matter, it doesn't matter. There's still beneficiaries, in Moses' time, there was those beneficiaries and they're the ones that helped build the cities and fight the battles and do all the things that need to do as they take possession of the promised land. Joshua. And you realize, there's going to be those, but the forerunners must be identified, they must begin to take their place, they must begin to realize, nobody's gonna do this for us, we are the people of the land. No foreigner can come in and do it. I've gone to so many places and I've, I've been to these places and you will look, the places that the forerunners rise and they don't wait for the outsider to do it for them. They realize, there are these people that come in and help light a fire and they coach and they can encourage and they can help you along the way, but they can't do it. God is looking for people among the, this land to stand in the gap for the nation. And there's people that he's been preparing for such a time as this. So sometimes you start, the forerunners come and God begins to add to your number and begin to build the way and then he begins to bring forerunners into the marketplace, forerunners into reaching the young people, forerunners into reaching the different ethnic groups, there are the different faith camps, but wherever it is, we must begin to start with those that God has been stirring and saying, I want you. And we all think, who am I? Who am I? All of us think that it's not about you or I, it's about the one who called us. He put the burden on our heart, we didn't put it there, we did not put it there. God put the burden on our heart. I was, before I even knew any of this stuff, I was reading the Bible one day and I was reading in First Kings about Elijah, about how he called down fire from heaven and I, I, I was in awe of the faith that he had to call the nation down there and to know that he knew God would bring down fire. I mean, he soaked those logs in so much water that he was so confident in the fire that God would bring. I mean, I think just standing there and believing fire would come from heaven would be enough, you don't even need to get them wet. But he did, he had so much confidence and I was in awe of him. I saw the way God worked through his life and then I was reading about Elisha and the way God worked through him and that you even come to the end of his life, that Elisha is dead, laying in the grave. And there's such anointing on him that even as they throw a dead body and it touches his bones, it comes back to life. And I remember I shut my Bible and I had tears rolling down my face and I said, I don't know the God of the Bible. I know the God of American culture, I know the God of America, but I don't know the God of the Bible. And I said, I don't even know anybody to go to, to know him. I mean, I prayed, I read, I did all the things that a good Christian does, but I was brokenhearted because I didn't know the God of the Bible. And God, that's when he started me on this journey, he said, you, Jesus is the way, you must do everything he tells you, one day at a time, and he will lead you to the center of my will and my purpose. And I let go of control and it wasn't easy and it wasn't smooth, it was sloppy, it was messy, it was a struggle, but God began to lead me and that's when God was showing me, Mark, you're a forerunner. I mean, I was a, I'm a nobody, but God was calling me, God had chosen me, God was calling me out, it doesn't matter where we stand, remember, he doesn't look at the outward appearance, he looks at the heart. And there are people in this land and my cry is, God, begin to that they begin to stop waiting on somebody else, Pastor Song, you do it, Pastor so-and-so, you do it, hey, Sister so-and-so, you do it. No, we must begin to respond to the call of God. Amen. I want to say a short prayer and then we're gonna allow time for questions and then I'll respond to those. So let me just pray for this, thank you. I just really want to pray, put your hands on your heart, please. Put your hands on your heart, please. Father, it's so easy to walk in insecurity and self-doubt, even in false humility. It's so easy to look at people that have big stages and big names and all these other kind of platforms and to feel like we are nothing. But God, you are the one that puts burdens on our hearts. You are the one that gives assignments and mandates. It doesn't even matter what men or women think of us, or even how they categorize us. It's all that's gonna matter is as we stand before you, we were faithful with the assignments you gave us. So, Lord, we come here and say, begin to stir our hearts. Here we are, God, use us. We want to play whatever role and assignment you have for us for your purposes to advance in Singapore. We don't wanna wait on others to do it, and we will get behind them. We want to begin to go through, go through the gates, build up the highway, remove the stones. God, I pray right now that there will be a church, or two, or three, that'll really begin to seek you and understand what will it take for this to be a lighthouse in Singapore? There's to be a place where we really build altars of prayer personally and as a family. God, I really pray that you will begin to build family altars that you dramatically do a work in and through. Father, I pray that you will begin to raise up marketplaces where your presence is coming and moving. Lord, you know the steps, you know the timing, you know the way. But we pray for procrastination and distraction and diversion and excuses to be laid down in Jesus' name. God, we say, you lead us forward, and we will go. We will go through the gates. We will build up the highway. We will prepare the way. Lord, we pray this in Jesus' name. Amen, amen. Praise the Lord. Let me, I'm going to just ask somebody to maybe take the microphone around to people, and so that you can ask questions about any of the things we've talked about over the last while, whether it's about your altar, or just some of the things that you're struggling with. And I just wanna take notes. I'm not gonna answer each person like one by one. I'm just gonna get the heart of what you're saying, take notes, and then respond after we've given a chance for people to make comments. So, you're gonna run the microphone around? Amen. Please, don't be shy, okay? We need to interact. Don't be shy. It may be what you normally do, so just because you're please ask your questions. I know you have them. I've been in too many places that I know there's questions in your mind and heart, so please express them. Thank you. Who's first?
Yes, good morning. I'm Michael, Kingdom Community Church. So, if we start the prayer altar, should we ask the congregation? Or should we ask who called, the intercessors, the seniors? Or anybody who is already felt, you know, want to join? And should this be an open gathering?
Let me make sure I understand your question. Are you saying, what's the process by which we can engage the congregation to get involved in this?
Yes.
Okay.
The reason why I ask is that sometimes in a church settings, you have a so-called a general prayer gathering, whereby you invite the church, all of them. Sometimes we say, oh, let's just ask the intercessors. You know, and especially the word intercessors. Sometimes some people when hear that, oh, I don't belong to that group. These are for those.
Amen. Next question.
My name is David Su. I'm from Goyang Fong Amari. I'm a marketplace entrepreneur. And one of the challenges that when we try to build the altars in my company and workplace is that there are many other staff who are not Christian. And they look at you and they felt very sometime uncomfortable. They think that maybe you go out of boundary. Go outside the boundary or the normal business practice, right? Because in the marketplace, people are still a little bit more kind of reserved in terms of the expression of religions. So, I've been trying to tell my staff that this is not about religions. This is about life transformation. This is about what we believe in our corporate culture. But there's still a process of understanding and experiencing God. So, I'd like to maybe see your advice and your experience. Have you had the similar experience? And what will be the, some of the experience you may want to share with us to make it more effective or make it more comfortable for the
Non-believers?
Yes, that's right. Thank you.
Hi, good morning. My name is Anthony here from Jurong Christian Church. I'm looking at in terms of a praying altar for the nation. Now, Singapore, we have about 500 churches, both conservative and charismatic, and we have different type of churches here. And this has also has split into churches and not able to unite together. So, I'd like to hear from you in terms of praying, having set up, setting up this prayer altar across the churches in Singapore. Maybe you have encountered things that you have done, processes that you have taken in terms of uniting different denominations, in terms of conservative and also charismatic churches. How can we unite the church together in that sense? Thank you.
Thank you. Other question. Amen.
Hi, my name is Peter. I'm from Church of Singapore Admiralty. You shared just now about the glimpse of your process of having the successful altar being built in your life. Would like to share that with us. Think it's a very good experience for us as well, as we learn this process of building altars right now in our own personal life.
So, you, I'm, you want me to share?
You mentioned after you studied Kings about
Oh, yeah.
and you went through a tremendous process, which you did not really relate
I did not go into detail, yeah.
We would like to know that because it's very interesting.
The detail of my own building of my own prayer altar?
That's right.
Amen. Another question. I know there's a few more. They wanna, I want them to hear it too.
Yeah, when you, when you are, you've got your prayer altar, things come up against you.
Yes.
Really come up against you. And, you know, it's really hard to get that fire back. How do you keep it burning constantly?
You talking about in the middle of prayer or after it's over?
The prayer altar's in your heart, right? I mean, you're walking around every day. You've got God in your heart, right? It's the prayer altar of the heart, I think. And even at home, right, when there's so many things going on, or even in your workplace, how do you keep that? Because you feel like discouraged. You just think, oh, tired. How do you keep that going?
Yeah, amen.
My name is John from Church of Singapore Bukitima. Okay, if we are personal prayer altar, how do we really feel that the presence of God has come to us tangibly? And also, as I was reading your book, it says that if we are very close to God, then this spiritual gateway open to us personally. And wherever we go, the presence of God goes with us. How do we know it very tangibly in that way?
Amen. It's similar to her question. These are questions that come any part of the world. It doesn't matter if you're in England or if you're in Zimbabwe.
I'm Yvonne from Church of Singapore Bukitima. The question is that how do you do this altar transformation concept to do it with children in the church?
Like not in the family, in the church?
Yeah. And then what would be the best way to do it? Is it with the family itself, or you change the order of service? And how to get this to the children in the church?
Amen.
From experience, I'm Simon from St. John Seminary Church. After years of establishing a prayer altar, either in the home or in the church or in the cells, what happens is that initially, we start with a fire, you know, and it's all prayer and worship. But through the years, what I've seen is that other things come and creep in. Things like intercession, you have to pray for this, and Bible study. And so, you find that our lighthouse, our prayer altar sort of like goes in a different direction. So, how can we maintain it? How can we keep it going with understanding that the church has other needs, other ministry? And so, we can't keep on going, you know?
Amen. I'm a pastor too, so I understand. Any more questions? Let's get two more. Can we get two more questions?
Good morning. I'm Claire from Kingdom Community Church. I have two questions. One is regarding my personal altar. This is something new to me. You shared, I think, yesterday night, yeah, about saturating ourselves with the word of God. So, I'm just wondering, sometimes with a busy schedule, are we, is it okay to, you know, sometimes do it throughout the day instead of everything in one shot? That's the first question. And the second one is, what are the processes of helping my small group to build up not only personal altar, but also as a group? Because I do have a few ladies who are quite ill. And I'm thinking whether, you know, that we're able to help them, as our dear sister shared earlier, over the illnesses. Just want to know about the processes. Thank you.
Amen.
One of the item of this altar is continuous fire. I would like to more, to know more about this continuous fire. Because I kept on reading again and again, but I still couldn't catch the thing.
Amen.
Thanks.
Amen. All right, before I close, I'm just to close the questions. Is there anybody else that has another question that's on their heart? All right, let's get that one. You did very well. You all gave me lots of questions.
I'm gonna try and articulate this in the way I think I know best. Language is everything. We have a generation who we are trying to get out of building altars. Our, a lot of parents, a lot of youth nowadays come from homes who have altars. And when they become Christians, they tell their parents, take down that altar. And now, we're trying to use this language of prayer altar. How do you break that mindset? Because I've been speaking to youth ever since I heard about this prayer altar. And I understand the concept. I know, but language is everything. When you approach them, you just said, oh, do you wanna read John Bolindi's book, Mark Daniel's book on prayer altars? What? That's the first thing I get. And I don't know if you have encountered this
We have, yeah.
So, I just wanna know how we can actually break this mindset? Because I think Singapore is unique in
This question has come everywhere in the world, yeah.
Oh, great. That's cool. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, yes, sir.
I don't come with a question because Pastor Mark, you have already given the answer. I think when you said, when you quoted the verse Isaiah 62, I think this is probably what you may be alluding to. But I think Isaiah 62 gave us the answer. Because this is what we want to see happen. Pass through, pass through the gates, prepare the way for the people, build up, build up the highway, remove the stones, raise a banner for the nation. I think you need to see the endpoint first. And I think Isaiah 62 gave us the endpoint of what we want to see, that the Lord has called us to do something, whether be in the home, be in the, in the city, be in the company, in the church. And then, as, as what prayer is all about, is also to seek God and seek the way to do this. So, I figured that there will be a no-one answer for it all, but
That's a good point.
Mark, you really given me the word, because I'm also from the same organization where David Su is from. And we've been, thanks to Pastor Song, we've been having a wonderful prayer altar. And I think this is, this is the call of God and a lieutenant as well, that we must take the ownership as forerunners, seeing ourselves as forerunners to go in to accomplish, to achieve this, this what God has put upon our heart. Before you ask, I mean, and then I think the Lord will give the answers and direct the way, the path, as well as the people.
Amen.
Yeah. So, I think this is what I'm really receiving this morning.
Amen. I wanna thank you all. These have been great questions, and I'm going to try to address them. I'm going to apologize before I start because I know I will fall short to some degree. So, have mercy on me. Because sometimes you think you understand what they're asking, and you don't quite get it in your answer. But I'm going to go for this. One of the things that I hear in the basic question is, we need to realize that this is a journey. We live in a day and time where everything is supposed to be quick and easy. And we get programs to disciple, to evangelize, to do all the things we wanna do, and that we want these one, two, three steps, and then everything's done. And we've done that and realized that gives us shallow results. And so, this is much more of a dependency upon God, and a much more of us saying, this is a bit of a journey. And in that journey, it's messy sometimes. We don't just go and easily follow three steps in his presence. There is a work he's going to do in our lives. That's what it means about going through the gates, preparing the way. You really realize that there are powers, there are mindsets, there are things in Singapore that everybody is being affected by. And a part of what God is going to do is work on your life. I remember, I told the story, I think it was the first night, but when we were early on in this, we were crying out for our nation, and God said he couldn't open the nation to us because the idols of the land were in our heart. And he said, you need to repent of the idols of the land, then I'll open the nation to you. I didn't even know what he was, idols he was talking about. I just was led to start reading Jeremiah and Aziz I just was led to start reading Jeremiah and Ezekiel and saw God's heart towards idolatry. And I started having this brokenness in my spirit, about how much God saw idolatry as adultery. And that it was as though you're turning away from Him and going to another lover. And it was probably two months into the process that God showed me my idol. And my biggest idol was self-reliance. He took the scriptures and showed me how much I relied on myself instead of Him. And He showed me how the heart of that, and it broke my heart. I cried as I realized how much I'm relying upon my human thinking, my human, you know, you're trying to solve problems, fix things, and all of this stuff. And that's a part of humanism. And that's so strong in my nation. That spiritual power is covering my nation. And God was showing me, you can't lead anything in this nation out when you're still under it. So you have to realize that a part of this is going to be God dealing with us. So it's almost like have patience as we're going. And I honestly believe that was hard for this modern age where we want everything fast. You know what I'm saying? We want it fast. I started changing my mindset, and I said, God, I don't know how much you need to do in me. I don't know how much you need to do so that we can become useful in your hands. And there was a humility that comes in that kind of attitude. You don't even know the role you have to play in this nation. You don't even know what He needs to do to prepare you to be a useful vessel. So allow yourself to be humble instead of impatient as He takes you through that process. Amen. If I, the brother asked for my own journey. It was the first year and have great success. There was a lot of repentance. That was the first year or more of my journey was repentance. Even as I'm building my personal altar, God was doing a work in my heart. He was changing me. He was taking the word and showing me things about Himself and all of that. And it was affecting me, and it was doing a work in me. Now, I would say a part of that even is allow God to do that. God began to speak to me about a wide variety, and even the people that were praying with me, and we were seeking God together. So many times we'd come together, and what we just did was repent. Because as we're reading the Word, as we're seeking God, we would be shown. I mean, God would tell people things that you could never tell them about them, but you knew it was true. He would tell people things like, you seek your own glory, and you don't seek my glory. I mean, He would tell them, and I thought, whoo. I mean, He's able to speak to them words I couldn't, even as their pastor. Because they would be mad at me if I said it the way He said it to them. I mean, He would tell them various things about their marriage, various things about their lives. And I'm saying He's preparing a vessel. So allow that journey. In Taiwan, they many times got the messages, and they put them in little booklets. You know, you're putting them on YouTube, and pastors groups and other people would watch them. Because they were letting the rendering yourself, giving yourself, abandoning yourself to God, deepen in hearts. And as that was deepening in people's hearts, God was preparing the ground for them to build an altar that would be strong. So it's in kind of a way, I'm saying, allow the preparation. Allow God to till the soil of your life. Allow Him to prepare the soil. Allow Him to begin to cut away the hooks that the land and that even the forces of that of our day are trying to hold us back. I mean, one of the things you'll know is, you start abandoning yourself to God, and you get so far, and then you can feel something trying to pull you back, saying, don't go too far. You're going to become something weird, or, you know, something bad, or something like this. And it's like you can feel like there's hooks trying to keep us pulled back. And God will begin to cut those away. Amen. I can't read my writing. The process of the congregation. Every congregation has a different form of leadership. Every congregation has a different structure and programs that they have in them. I would always say, though, the best way to start is small instead of big. Is to start with my few key leaders to really get us to seek, to come through, to see what it means to build altars, to see what it means to seek the Lord, to see what it means to saturate in the Word, to win a testimony in some in the church, so that we have somebody to stand up there besides just preaching, that we have a witness of people saying, this has changed my life, this is changing my family. And that as you do that, it's like you're building a foundation. It's the principle of the kingdom, that a little yeast will work through the whole loaf. And that as you're doing that, you will begin to get vision of how does this fit in our church with our other programs? Nobody can come and tell you how to do that, because each church has its own uniqueness. In fact, I tried to figure it out before God was telling me, and I couldn't figure it. I was just confused, you know, and I'd try this, and I'd try that, and I said, God, I'm going to go with your timing. But I know, here's what I did. I stood before my people, and I said, I don't know the God of the Bible. I don't know Him. I don't know the God that Moses knew, and Elijah knew, and Daniel know. I know the God of American culture, and I want to know the God of the Bible. I am going to go on this night and seek to know Him and seek Him. Anybody that wants to join me, come along. And that's all I did. Now, that may not fit. You may just want to say, let me get with my leadership, my small group leaders, or my elders, or my staff, or whatever it may be. You need to see where God shows you to start. But I know this, you need to get the reality. If you just try to teach from the pulpit, and then just try to do a prayer gathering, you will find it doesn't go anywhere. Because it's like, you really need to get this passage I just read out of Isaiah, some people that pass through, they get some breakthroughs. You need to get some forerunners in your ministry. Amen. Because as you start trying to bring the people, you need to be able to have testimonies. You need to have people that have broken through some things, that they can encourage the others, that it's possible. Because everybody's going to say, I don't have the time, or how do you do this, or what about that? They're going to have all these questions. And when there's people that have broken through that, it's going to be like a gate is open for them to come through. Amen? Does that help any? Okay, mildly helps. Marketplace, the boundaries. Yes, I was shocked in Singapore how they just seemed, because if I did some of what they did in Singapore, I think America, I don't know what they would do in some of these cases. But you know what, in America, the Muslims, they're working at the FBI, and they will go out and lay their cloths down and have prayer and do all of this stuff, and nobody says a word to them. I'm serious. Nobody says, they're at the FBI, at the national security, wherever they're at. I mean, the Muslims don't seem to be shy to do what they're doing. And so it's like somewhere we've become intimidated. Now, I know at some of the examples, that some of the people that I saw in various places, they seem to have a boldness about it. Some of the people did it before work. Like they had the iPhone factory one that's in the book, and I shared yesterday afternoon. He started before work on Monday, and then ended after work on Friday. And he had prayer altars. They read, they worshiped, and they began to seek the Lord. And he found the boundaries there. Now, that has expanded to where now they have prayer going on in every department, and they have watches. But he started there, and he only had three people that joined him. And as they were seeking God, they kept asking God, how can your presence come and impact this workplace? And God would begin to give them one step, and then they would follow that out. Then God would give them another step. Here's one of the important things. When you really get a prayer altar, it's not just so you can have communion with God. It's so that you can join Him in His work. There needs to be a missional element to your altar. If all it is is a communal element, that's important, but it'll just stagnate at a certain point. There needs to be a missional element, especially as you begin, like in homes, many times it is, God, we want to see salvation in our family, you know, the whole family, or things like this. And we're seeking you to see how to have that breakthrough. But without, I've seen many prayer altars that when they lose the missional element, it stagnates. So even if all you see is we can do it before work or after work, you get that kind of boundary, then God will show you how it can expand. Amen. I hope I answered that. I'm going to come back to unity in the church. The abiding presence, the fire of God. How do we walk with that sense of His presence? And I will tell you, it takes time. The first breakthrough I would really want, if I was starting with a prayer altar, is how to really sense that the presence of God is flowing freely. I've shared with you many people, when they first start building an altar, they can feel like there's resistance. And what there really is, is layers of darkness. And as we are seeking God, we begin to, He begins to identify some things that are in the way. Maybe it's an attitude towards somebody in my family. Maybe it's a sin that I've been carrying and, you know, hoping one day I'll deal with it, God, but not right now. Maybe it's something else, but God begins to deal with these things. As God begins to deal with these things, what you begin to see is Him begin to remove barriers that His presence may come. For me, some of my barriers, like when I would start to really try to praise God, I would have this thought come to my mind, oh, you're just working yourself up into emotion. This is just emotionalism. You're just trying to create something of your own. This isn't really God. And so I had a lot of doubt that would try to come at me. I honestly found, after I had walked a while, that I really struggled with the humanism of my land. That tried to figure everything out with human reasoning, and human logic, and human thinking, and, you know, all of that kind of stuff. I was exposed that I had become susceptible to the humanism of America. And God had to begin to break that. But how did I break through these doubts, these fears? Everybody I know starts seeing doubts, fears, discouragements, insecurities, all of these things trying to rise up and hinder this communion with God. You don't look at the battle, the darkness, you look to the Lord. It's like if you look at the darkness, you can get lost. I remember, I don't know if I should tell this story. One time, I told Pastor John, I said, every time, there's times I come to this place, these doubts just plague me. Like one time I'm reading the Bible, I'm in Uganda, and I'm going to be ministering, and I'm reading the Bible where, you know where Ahab and Jezebel are in the, and they're talking about the vineyard that he wanted, and she's complaining to him about why he's being such a crybaby about it, and they're going back and forth about. And there is this thought that came right here, and it said, how does the writer of the Bible know what Ahab and Jezebel was saying in their palace? Huge doubt. And it wasn't just a thought, it had power. And the power was to really begin to bring unbelief into my heart. And I even knew, if I look at that, that doubt is going to begin to really cause a sinking in my heart. And so I just, you know, just looked at the Bible, I kept reading and tried to ignore it. And I came to him, and I said, described what happened. And I described that this is not uncommon, that I see this kind of come now and then. And so he said, well, I'll pray about it. And then he didn't get back to me. So six months later, he's in America, and we're doing ministry, and the doubts are there again. And I come and bring them to him. And I said, what's going on? He said, let me have three days, I'll go pray and get back to you. So he got back to me, and he said, Pastor Mark, you need to go to war. And I said, okay, what does that mean? And he said, I want you to begin to claim the victory that Jesus has won for you. I want you to think of every verse that comes to mind that begins to declare His victory over the darkness, His victory that how He's destroyed every enemy has no rights to you, that the legal ground has been broken. I want, whether you're getting ready, whether you're in battle or out of battle, I just want you to pray that, and just keep praying that. And somewhere along the line, something will happen that this battle will be exposed, and it can be broken. So I did that for 10 days. I just praised the Lord, I glorified Him. Sometimes I would feel a battle, sometimes I didn't. On the about, the 10th day of this prayer, I had this revelation. And whenever God gives me a revelation, it's like He compacts it all, and it's a second that He gives it. But there's so much in it. It's like you can see your whole history, you could see the limitations in the future. You know so much, and it looks like this brief, like, it's like, so if you take data and you compress it, it's like you zip it up, and then it, it's so much in. That's what He did. And He showed me how I had been raised in a humanistic environment. And that this humanism had called me to live by sight and not by faith. And that that had allowed the enemy to have a place inside of my heart. Unless I changed to become like a child and humbled myself, that I would not be able to soar. I could see that all of my life, it's like I lived in this small room, trying to build Christian character and do the right things, but I didn't know how to really release everything because I was still trying to figure it all out and make sure I grasp it. And that the only way I could soar into the things He had for me was to begin to trust Him. And He showed me that with that, it was beyond doubt. And that I did not, He was not going to woo me anymore and prove that He was this, that, or the other, that He had already proven Himself to me in these two different times. And whenever the enemy would come at me with doubt, that I wasn't even to look at Him or answer Him. That even trying to answer his accusation was like getting into the trap, that I needed to look straight at the Lord and declare, I trust Him because He's revealed Himself to me this way and this way. And He showed me, if you will stand, that that can be broken. If you do not stand, you're going to stay confined. It's like you're never going to be able to soar. It's like all of that I could see, and it had clarity. And so it was like, for three weeks, I had this intense battle. The enemy kept saying, if you give up this, you're going to believe fairy tales. You're giving up reason, you're going to become foolish. And he's just attacking, attacking, attacking. But I kept standing to the Lord. The Lord is my wisdom. I choose God's wisdom over human wisdom. And I just kept going, and it was broken. And I give you that, that was a more intense battle than others. But I'm telling you, what will happen as you build altars, these kinds of things in your life that are holding you back will be exposed. And you'll start realizing, this thing is hindering me. I leave, I mean, people in my circle realized, I've got woundedness, and I just, I nurse this wound. I've got pity, I just keep, and it's hindering me for taking off and being useful to God. So that's a part of what God starts doing. And as He breaks those things, you see the presence of God, being able to take you far beyond where you've been going even thus far in your life. Amen. So how do I abide in His presence? Now, you have to know this, that as you start drawing into the presence of God, I tell this story in the book. But it was two British people, and the reason I love the story about them is because it's so simple. They were not praying people. They were very nominal Christians, but they heard the teaching at a place in England. They went home, they lived near Cambridge, and they started praying. They read the Bible for about 45 minutes to an hour, and then they began to praise the name of the Lord. As they praised, it was awkward, it was difficult at first. They didn't feel any big breakthroughs. About two weeks into it, they said, you could start feeling like you're hitting something. And like it was giving way a little bit. So they were encouraged, so they kept going until one day they could feel like something ripped. And the heavens were beginning to be opened. And they could feel like there's a sense of God's presence. You have to go for that. Now, as the heavens start to open, and how do you know that it's the presence of God? There's many ways that you know, but one of the ways is your heart. I love, for me, whenever I begin to engage the presence of God, I speak words of love to Him that just naturally flow out of my mouth. You start telling, I give you everything. I give you everything. The presence of God, your heart melts, and you don't ask, but it's like, God, there's no one like, I give you all that I have. The presence of God is something you're learning to court. You're learning, what does it mean? Don't get frustrated with that. Because even as you're beginning to read, like I said before, is I read the Because even as you're beginning to read, like I, I said before, is I read the Bible wanting to know God. I just want God to be revealed to me, whether I'm reading in Esther or whether I'm reading in Psalms or the Gospel of Mark. I'm saying, I want to know you and I want to worship who you are. That's the attitude that I had in the altar. You can't fail, because He says, if you seek, you will find. If you knock, the door will be opened. If you seek Me with all of your heart, you will find Me. I know God is a rewarder of those who seek Him. He's a rewarder. So His presence will become more and more tangible. So as you feel that rip and that the presence of God becoming, it's like it's easier to access Him, it's easier to focus on Him. It's easier to begin to sense His spiritual, the Spirit leading your prayers, the Spirit engaging your reading. And as you do that, then whenever you begin to sense the leaving of that presence, you start asking God, what, what happened? What hinders your presence? I mean, He showed me, He told me, you need to live in an attitude of praise. I, I mean, when I would pray and I would experience His presence so deeply and profoundly, then I would start going in my day and then in my day, I would start feeling like I'm losing it. You know what I mean? It's like my heart is getting more human, it's like you feel like an ordinary man instead of a man filled with the Spirit of God. You know what I'm saying? You start feeling less connected, less sensitive. You start feeling more just like a person instead of a spirit-filled believer. And I started saying, God, what's hindering? And He, and He showed me, you speak negatively. You need to live a lifestyle of praise. You speak discouragement sometimes, you speak doubt sometimes, you speak like you're looking at the problem instead of the hope in me. And He started showing me, you, you're like, you need a lifestyle of praise. And it's like, okay, God. So I'm saying, He will show you. He showed me, you know how your, your mind works? It's like you go and you think about things. And I pictured it like I had a board, boardroom in my mind. And there, I let the Spirit of God in there, I let myself in there, let my own thoughts be known. I let discouragement in that boardroom, sometimes fear sat in that boardroom. And I remember the day He showed me, kick discouragement out of your mind. Stop, you act like it's going to help you, it's not going to help you. You treat it like a friend, it's not a friend. I say all that to say, as you go, God will show you how to abide in His presence. I don't think that lesson ever stops. As the weight of your calling increases, you will even begin to sense how to carry His presence. And that's a part of your seeking. Your seeking is not for just a few weeks, your seeking becomes a lifestyle, a lifestyle of seeking God, a lifestyle of wanting and courting His presence leading you. Even now, as I am carrying different responsibilities or different weights, God, I have to start, the prayers, I pray is, God, I, I feel like I'm falling behind time. I feel like it's harder to come into Your presence. Show me what I need to do to stay in that place of sensitivity before You. Because you realize your obedience needs to stay current. You stay in the pace of the Lord, the pace of the Spirit. So this is a thing that you will constantly sensitive to. So first get a breakthrough, like that couple in England, of really beginning to build an altar where you can begin to sense something begins to break in the presence of God. Get that breakthrough and then you learn how to court the presence of God. Amen. How do you help your children? Let me say this. I'm gonna talk about this at a couple of different angles. First of all, let children come to your family altar, if you have one, whether they play with toys while they're doing it, it doesn't matter. But let them grow up seeking, seeing the adults seek the presence of God. Don't let them wait till they go to bed and then do it. Because even them seeing that will have impact on their lives. It will have impact that they see that kind of thing. Second of all, even, you, everybody that has ever done this with their children are amazed that the children can contribute. They can contribute to praise, they can contribute even when we read the Word. If there's a child in the room, we even say, what do you see? That God, my youngest son was little when he, we was at our altar, when we first started. Sometimes the insights he had were silly. He said, oh, I'm amazed at the weight David's crown weighed. I was like, okay. But sometimes he would see things with that childlike faith that would bless everybody in the room. But I'm saying, let them contribute. Don't treat them like they don't have anything to add. In our children's ministry, our children's pastor even taught, took prayer altars and said, let me teach this in children's church. And they taught the children prayer altars. In fact, we had children going home to parents who didn't pray and started asking, can we do this in our home? So we had prayer meetings where children would lay in the floor, you know, as they're doing it. We have youth, that some of our youth are more on fire prayers than some adults are. So we just allowed access to the children. And you have to begin to, I honestly, like I said, I start with a core leadership, I build and let it grow, but I encourage them, let children be active in the family altar. Even if they come and go, don't worry about that. Don't get, we had people, parents that would get mad at them, sit down, be quiet, pay attention. It's like, just let them be. And let them be as they experience you seeking the Lord and doing that. As they get older, they will begin, because you'll realize they stop and pay attention for a little while. And then they'll go be busy again, then they'll come back and watch mommy or daddy as they're worshiping God. And it's beautiful. Then when you need to pray with them about something, it's not an odd thing. It's not unusual. Amen. Saturating in the Word. I'm gonna be, I'm gonna tell you, you said, you have to do it all in one shot. I understand that question. I probably normally, before I started building an altar, spent 30 to 40 minutes a day with God. So going from 30 to 40 minutes to what I was being challenged to do was two hours. That's a significant increase. Now, I'm not impressed with my 30 minutes because, you know, but I had let the world just squeeze me, squeeze me, squeeze me until that's what I was giving God. So when I started trying to change, I went to the two hours, but it was hard, I would even find it difficult. I probably built up slowly. What I would say to you, I'm gonna tell you what's ideal and then let you work with God to get there. Like if somebody comes and says, let's go to the gym and you haven't been to the gym that much and they show you what's ideal, you realize, I can't get there instantly, but I'm moving that way. All right. The ideal is being able to saturate in the Word. Sometimes it takes you three or four chapters in before your mind even calms down. So that's the reason why if you just read bits and pieces, sometimes you just read the stories, you don't let the Spirit of God capture your heart. And if you can sit there and really saturate in the Word, sometimes it really is, three or four chapters in, your mind settles and you start really connecting to the words. The Spirit of God starts taking things and speaking to you, there's a reverence. I have never been in a group of people where we read the Word that are reverenced and settle on the room. And usually it took a few chapters. And so that's the reason why even, some people, I've encouraged them, seen them, they like to take notes. And I would encourage them, as you're reading, if anything in the Word strikes you about God, that's worshipful, that's awe inspiring, that's worthy of honor or trust, jot it down so that when you come to hallow His name, if you need to look, glance at it, you could. But it's like, there is a sense that it's creating an atmosphere for you to begin to go into prayer with. That's the reason why it's not just reading like that, it is really helping your soul to be quieted, your focus to be set, your faith to rise, your heart to begin to be in awe of Him, so that as you go into worship and prayer, you can really begin to engage in a deeper spiritual reality. Amen. My writing has been sloppy up here. The wording of prayer altars. You know, when I first heard prayer altars, I didn't like it to myself. Everywhere I have gone, I've probably had somebody in some using it. I've had some people that would teach on prayer altars, but they never use the word prayer altars. They would talk about His presence or other things. I will tell you the reason why I value the word is because altar is used from Genesis to Revelation. It may have been misused by others, by false things, by other things. I mean, some people, one guy rejected it because he says, I was in, I was a Catholic and altar was all there all the time. Now this feels like you're trying to make me a Catholic again and all of this kind of stuff. And even as you begin to show Abraham was sent around the land to build altars, as you begin to realize Moses built altars, you connect into something of the Scripture. When you look at all the people that built altars, when you look at the altar that's in Revelations and you look at all of these things, it just begins to give a context and a biblical foundation that is valuable. So sometimes what I found people did, like if you're in an environment where you need to have answers, it's finding some biblical references that help answer some people's unsettledness. Because I found when people just took it out of, that there's something of a foundational piece they lost. And that's just for me. The, I don't know if there's anything I've left out. How do you deal with other church programs? I think I spoke a little bit. I start small and let it build and let it be in the Lord's timing and place. Unity, I didn't speak to unity of the whole church. I'll give you an example. Sometimes you can go for unity too fast. And you come to unity and it's either very shallow and it breaks apart easily, or it's like it's for just a short-term project. And so it doesn't last very long. Part of what I saw in Taiwan was that the, really the first year or so, that the message was going out and people were starting to seek God and God was preparing the soil. We weren't even trying to build much unity. It was more, God prepare the soil, make it where it's ready to bear fruit. And God was doing a deep work of that. Maybe about the, a year and a half of the people hearing the talks over and over again, one church said, let's really build. And they became a forerunner. And they said, we're really going to do this. And they labored, they prayed, they sought the Lord, they, they worked with the leaders, they would help them really say, like, why are you, what's happening when you pray? And they would find out what obstacles they're hitting, what forces are coming against you and helping them learn, how do you break through this, encouraging that one, go to the other one and say, what is your battle? And they really like walked with each of them until they began to get tangible breakthroughs. Then their small group leaders, as they began to get it, began to carry it in and that church began to get testimonies. And then that was opening the gate for others. And some of them, like this one guy, he was trying to teach them to hallow the name of the Lord and he wrote down on slides, names of God and they would just read them. Great I Am, Good Shepherd, Resurrection and Life. It wasn't life-giving, I mean, it wasn't, and, and he was just trying to get his people to hallow the name of the Lord. And eventually he realized, this isn't working, how do I do that? So I'm saying that to say, sometimes it's like that. You're trying to say, God, and you try something, it doesn't work, you come back to the Lord and you say, Lord, what's it gonna take? And then the breakthrough. So after the year of preparing the grounds or year and a half, and then the, the year the forerunners went out and really built some things, then others started following, then we started going into four key regions of Taiwan and we would hold gatherings of 5,000 people. In Taipei, it was 15,000 people gathering to really call upon the Lord. It was like there was something prepared. And then even when we sat down with the leadership of the, the leadership of the businessmen's networks, the, the main denominational leads, the, all of these people, we said, now we would like to go to see a great harvest. That leadership was saying, we feel like we're ready to do such a thing. We have to begin to move towards it. But I'm just saying, there's a, a timing of God that He'll begin to identify that. There's some preparation work you need to do to even get to it. Because right now, everybody would be so full of their own ideas, that unity would not even hold together. It's like we need God to come and humble us and work in us and do some things in us. And His presence begins to make unity possible. So, so praise the Lord, we're past 12, so I'm going to stop. Let me pray for you. Can I pray for you? Father, I thank you for my brothers and sisters. I thank you for the ministries they represent. I thank you for the heart of the even though we're veterans in the Lord, even though many of us are in leadership, that they have a heart of humility to seek You and to pursue You for what You are doing in the earth in this day. God, I thank you for the humility You've given them, that no matter how long they've been in church leadership, that they have a heart to humble themselves and not act like experts, but act like seekers of God. You said that You would reward seekers. In Hebrews, You said that You would reward those who earnestly seek after You. So God, I pray as they seek, they will encounter You in new and fresh and in amazing ways and that You will give them a fresh fire. A fresh wind of Your Spirit will begin to blow on them. And Father, we pray that it will begin to rise slowly, steadily, surely in this land. We pray this in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen.